Let's call the meeting ordered. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? If none, can we have some, like a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, you did.
Counselors, somebody, and anybody else from the second? Thank you. I'll hear these right.
You're right, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought mine was bad.
Did you see it?
Oh, I see that.
All those who've seen any of that motion?
I have.
And I, any names not? So, tonight, we have Terry Timberta, Esquerra Coordinator of Renewable Energy Climate Change from MODD.
MODD.
So, one of the things on our action list was renewables. It's down further in the list. I never want coastal, so finally I get somebody to come to talk about coastal erosion in January, so I'm thinking we should look at that. Terry's gonna give us an overview of all the exciting things happening in renewable energy and some of the things that we talked about for the last, how many years? A long time. You come right up here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me. Thank you, councilors, for allowing me to talk to you. And I guess that's what it's gonna be, is just to talk about what's going on. No presentation per se, but just a brief overview of what I've been doing for the last 10 years, I guess. It's been 10 years since I've been with the municipality.
Shouldn't take long.
Does that get recorded, George? It's Tom, so I figured as much, so. But, no, it's been, it's been, it's been a bit of a struggle, I guess, in being in rural Nova Scotia, trying to, you know, do different things. And related, as you know, our council made the decision to hire me as a renewable energy coordinator 10 years ago as part of their economic development platform. And so, again, it's, in rural Nova Scotia, I guess the first thing I would say is that being in rural Nova Scotia, we're at a disadvantage in some regards. As you know, we've got a 69 kilovolt transmission line that Nova Scotia Power maintains. It's the weakest transmission line in the whole province. And because it's weak and inferior, it doesn't allow, even though we have a 30-megawatt wind farm here in Digby, it doesn't allow for other potential utility-scale energy projects that can be transmitted easily through the transmission line. So if you talk to Nova Scotia Power and you say, "Well, will you do the upgrades?", so their reply is, and by the way, we met with the president, and I think Ben, you were there that, with Rob Benn at that time, and discussed this, and their adage is that if, if there's enough demand, then they would improve the line. So how do you create demand? So at the end of the day, we're stuck with this 69-kilovolt line. However, that's not the end of our worries, I guess, or what we can do in an effort to compensate for that is look at the distribution side of things, which is the distribution grid in Conway. And small-scale projects can work, and we've got a few on the go. I would just, I'll just go over a couple of things. We sent a letter off, and I don't know if it went off to the premier regarding some of the issues in Digby here, and we mentioned the 69-kilovolt line as being sort of holding us back in terms of trying to create a profile for economic development in regards to renewable energy. A few things that come to mind in that letter is that we basically, we basically tried to highlight the fact that, you know, climate change is a big issue for everybody, including Digby County. And I think more and more, we've gotta address some of those carbon emissions directly. And I'll get to some of that as some of the things that we're doing, we're trying to address that. A few things that we do in the municipality of Digby is we have a, what's called a PACE program. You may have heard of it. It's property-assess clean energy. And what we do is, we essentially finance on people's property taxes, energy efficiency upgrades to their homes. And so, just recently, we're successful in, in an award with the FCM to give more money to those participating municipal units. And I think we're around here, there's Yarmouth, ourselves, Barrington, Shelburne, Bridgewater, and there's a few up in the mid, in the northeast there, Cumberland, that have participated. And we're working through a group called Clean Foundation. They are the administrators of the program. So we have a stipulation that it needs to meet a one-to-one payback ratio, meaning that for every dollar that's gonna be expended, we need to see a dollar in savings. And some people argue that that's been a bit of a hindrance in getting more people to uptake the program. And we're looking at that closely because we wanna make sure that everybody has the same opportunities to take advantage of those programs, right? For a couple other facts that we were trying to readdress as well. The maximum limit rate now is $15,000, and it's a 10-year payback at 4% interest. We're trying to see through the FCM that the money that we got, if we can either lower the interest rate, improve the payback period, say go a little longer to 15 years, and even improve the amount that's being able to be financed. So, so far, has it been successful? It's a question of how you look at being successful. We've been doing it for about five years now, and I think under our belt, we've got about 25 or so in total, so about five a year. I think one of the limiting factors there is that a lot of people burn wood and find it more convenient just to go and get a couple cords of wood, I can chop it up, throw it in, and people burn oil as well. So this program is helping, or trying to be designed to get people off oil and essentially off wood and more onto electricity as a way to combat climate change. So that's the PACE program. It's, again, we've, we've been doing it for five years. We're trying to reinvent the marketing program that comes along with it, so there might be, see, might see some updated marketing information coming out very shortly. As Ben alluded to, we've been at this for a long time. In 2011, the province announced that Digby was the port of choice. For those of you who are not familiar with that, they did a study of all the ports around Dig, or around Nova Scotia and determined that Digby was the best-suited port to assist in the development of tidal energy, the new industry that was being created as a government initiative back in 2011. And to date, I think, well, that was one of the first projects that we worked on in 2012. We did a study to take a look at where the actual laydown area could be, and we picked up three spots, one downtown, one closer by, across from the Digby pines, and one up by the ferry terminal as potential sites that could accommodate. But it's a question of which comes first, right? So while I'm on the topic, SME, which is one of the largest companies at the moment, they're in Brower Island, they've got two machines out of Brower Island. They're anticipating building 28 machines total and having those deployed, actually 21, 21 turbines, sorry, not 28, and having those deployed up in the Upper Bay of Fundy, up in the Minas Passage. So at the moment, they've got two down at Brower Island, one is gonna be grid-connected coming soon. And so, they got most of their work done at AF Terrio Shipyard. The other, another company that's in the waters that got approved, and I think you've heard, Tom was asking for NOVA innovations. NOVA's also been approved for 15 turbines, I believe, in the Minas, in the Petit Passage. They'll be starting off deploying their first one come January, February, and grid-tying that as well. That's gonna be in Petit Passage. They also did some work with AF Terrio. Another company that came to town not too recently, and Ben and I, along with the harbor authority at the time, and it was my current boss, Jeff Sunderland, we visited Eastport, Maine, and visited the facilities where ORPC, Ocean Power Research, no, Renewable Corporation, has their headquarters, and so they wanna come to Digby as well.
Did you cross the border, Perry, Kibbittle? No. That's the guy that threatened me with his gun, that border guy.
Yeah, that's right. Well, we took one look at Ben, and he said, "You must be Montreal Canadiens, Ben, is it pull over?"
He actually threatened me, he's like, "Haul my car around."
Yeah, but we backed him up, we said he was good for it, so, anyway. If you were there, Ben, you would be slowly over there. But no, it was, they're, they're, they're up in Alaska right now, they've got a couple installations, United States is really backing this company up. And so, they were in town just be about three weeks ago, looking at a couple spots, and I think they're looking more favorably in the Digby gut here. So we gotta get them back and start to do some more late work. The end goal of this is to try to create a supply chain where we can get local companies that can participate in the production of these turbines. Not necessarily, may not necessarily be the turbine coming from Europe that's, that they're talking about, but it's all the other support, like the bases and, and some of the work that needs to go in to make these happen. So, on that note, we're working with Marine Renewables Canada at the moment to help them develop what's called a supply chain database, and that's to look at companies that are existing here in Digby that have that opportunity or have the capacity to offer whatever it is. They might have a, you know, welding machine and CNC machine or whatever, and they can offer products perhaps, so we just gotta drill that down. So that's something that, that I'm working on as well. About six years ago, we did a study with Dalhousie University to take a look at our distribution grid, I mentioned earlier about our distribution grid. And that was designed to, to see what impact electric vehicles, if we started to introduce more electric vehicles onto the grid, what impact it would have. And at the time, the, the study determined that you could add about 10% or 12% of electric vehicles without a direct impact on the grid as it is. I know that's not where we're at, but at least it was an idea, to give us an idea in terms of what the distribution grid, what impacts it would have on the grid. And so, to that end, I'm working with a couple groups right now to look at trying to electrify wharfs. There's a study going underway at COE, which is a center for ocean ventures and entrepreneurship outside of Dartmouth, and we gave them a letter of support, but a COE was looking at us directly to start with, and they said, "Well, that's, we're gonna do it with COE." But essentially what they wanna do is take a look at how, what, what it would take to electrify a wharf. In other words, can we bring in battery storage? And can the boats, once, if they become electrified, would the boats be able to be used as storage, energy storage back to the grid, back and forth to the grid? You store the energy in the boat, the boat becomes a battery of its own back to the grid. So it's a bit, it's a bit far-reaching, but at the same time, you know, there's a movement afoot to try to get more electric vessels in the ocean. And on that note, you know, one of the biggest polluters, the REN, the REN had, did an energy audit or an energy plan, and we have, one of the biggest polluters, I guess you could say, is the fishing industry. And, and that's because of the amount of diesel and fuel that they're burning in, in southwest Nova Scotia. If you've seen the report, you'll see that the transportation industry and, to some extent, the marine transportation industry is one of the biggest contributors of greenhouse gases in this area. So one of the areas we're trying to see is what we can do to work with either boat builders to see about introducing new techniques. One of them perhaps is the introduction of hydrogen technologies into converting some of these vessels to burn hydrogen. It could be far-reaching, but what we're saying is that if, if we're able to, to look at some of what we call next-generation technologies, and one of them being hydrogen, it could have a major impact on a reduction of greenhouse gases in southwest Nova Scotia. When you think about it, there's 7,000 or 8,000 vessels in all the southwest, and each one of them 500 liters to 1,000 liters of fuel every time. So imagine the greenhouse gases that the, the industry is putting out. So we're, we're part of the Atlantic Hydrogen Association, it's a newly-formed group that was set up by OERA and by Atlantica, Energy Atlantica, the New Brunswick. In fact, we have a call tomorrow's Tuesday, Wednesday, is the first call, it's called the Atlantic Hydrogen Hub, and it's to identify areas like Digby that could become hubs for hydrogen production and the production, not the industry itself, in creating more efforts to get people off of oil, off of diesel, and more hydrogen production. So more to come on that as it gets developed. I guess, a few areas that I think may be closer to home here in terms of, how much time do I have, Mr. Mayor?
There was no hockey.
You'll let me know.
No hockey tonight, didn't you?
No hockey tonight, right, so.
Hockey.
A little closer to home, you'll, you'll know that there's a wind turbine on Mount Pleasant here, an 800-kilowatt turbine that the municipality owns and operates. And we also have a 50-kilowatt smaller turbine that the municipality owns and operates under what's called a Comfit program. So the bigger turbine, in fact, we just signed, it's going through, but we're holding our nose while we did it, an extension to our power purchase agreement with Nova Scotia Power. We were getting 7.073 cents for the wind energy out of that turbine, and now they dropped it down to 5 cents, 5.4 cents. And the reason that they gave us, we thought we'd at least get the status quo, which gives us an opportunity to create green electrons without losing money. However, Nova Scotia Power is saying that the future price of wind is coming in at 5 cents. So we were fortunate to get that 5, 4 cents. So however, we're looking at other opportunities, what we can do to, to create more value-added for the turbine if possible, instead of just getting the 5 cents. And some of the ideas that have come up, and again, these, these are, you know, I hope the information will stay in here, we're working with a company that's looking at, and I'd like to talk to either DDA more or the council a little bit more because it involves the lands up by the, by the wind turbine. They wanna install a data center to do mining, what they call data mining through computers. And they need a lot of energy, they want green energy, and so I've been talking to a company out of Halifax that has set up a few of these, one in Eskazoni already, where they have basically go in, build a building, put in these computers, and have them run through renewable energy sources. So there could be an opportunity there for both the town and the municipality to see how we can take advantage of the turbine, at least to make sure that we break even with the turbine as opposed to losing money, at the same time, create an opportunity to, to put a building up the property. So more to come on that as the company gets to me. But one of the other opportunities there that, that in speaking with a few, and is that there's two lakes up in Mount Pleasant, and there's a thing called Pumped Hydro, which is using the lakes to, to create your own electricity and sell it back to the grid or sell it back to customers yourselves. So if there was an interest from the town to take a look at that further, there's a place in Newfoundland, in St. Mary's, don't have it off the top of my head, but they installed a Pumped Hydro system to provide electricity for their town in Newfoundland. So what they do is they, they move water from the top down to the bottom and just circulate water back and forth, that's basically how it works. Another opportunity that you could take a look at is floating solar panels on the lake, which is another one that somebody said to me that could be an opportunity for the town. That's putting solar panels that create electricity right on the lake as a floating device as opposed to fixed. And speaking with the province, it looks like they're gonna be coming out with another shared solar program come the spring, and that's where different groups have an opportunity to put upwards of 75 kilowatts of, of electricity through green, green electricity onto the grid and get a power purchase agreement from Nova Scotia Power. So these are a program that the province is coming out with. And sometimes what's available out there, and, and we're in the same position at the municipality, we don't have a whole lot of cash, so we're trying to partner with developers that would come in and finance these projects and still maintain a relationship with the municipality in terms of transfer of revenues and, and profit sharing, et cetera, so.
How much are you aware of the, the solar firm at Stuyac, which just came on?
Yeah.
In Berwick, in those. Are you familiar with that?
You mean with Area?
Well, Stuyac just turned their system on, the town of Stuyac.
Yeah, that was a 75-kilowatt community solar. So that was one that just got installed. I was reading about it too, you're right, it was in the paper, I think, or CBC. That, that was announced two years ago, I believe, and so they're probably just coming to fruition on getting it, yeah.
They just turned it.
75 kilowatts. I think they said they're gonna make between 25 or 20,000 dollars a year. We had looked at that originally, but the payback, we felt the payback was a bit too long. At the time, and the prices that the, for, for solar panels, it would've meant like a 10- or 12-year payback, and the program's a 20-year PPA, so it meant like eight years of generating. So essentially, over 20 years, you'd end up making maybe $100,000 if you maxed, if you maxed out the 75 kilowatts. So, and, and we decided it, it just wasn't, wasn't feasible or affordable, or we didn't think that at the time that, that it made sense. So, one of the other things that we got involved in early was looking with Lockheed Martin at a, at a district heat system in Digby here, to look at a district heat system up for the hospital, the businesses in around the schools, the RCMP building, the arena. And at the time, Lockheed Martin determined that because of our grid situation that it wasn't feasible unless we could get a Comfit approval. This was when Comfit was in hot on the system. Unless we did have a Comfit, there was no way that the, the device would pay for itself over time, so.
Westford, I don't know how long that was, they came here and wanted our blessing to do a study on.
For the hospital or for district?
District heating for, for the community.
Yeah.
Never heard another word. We just gave them a blessing, didn't say we could.
Well, if they want the Lockheed study, they can, I mean, it's public domain, right?
Yeah, they're providing whatever happens.
I think the, one of the biggest costs there too was the, the lines themselves. It was something like $1,000 a meter to have these return lines put in, so just the, the cost of the lines. And what you need in a combined heat and power plant is maximum efficiencies of both the electricity generation and the heat generation. So if you can't, if you don't have those two elements going, then, you know, it could be a losing proposition.
I think we had a couple gentlemen in the council one time pushing at, yeah, that was Westford.
I met them, yeah, I met with them, a couple young guys. And so I, I think they were successful in getting one maybe at the community college in, in Laurence Town. There's a biomass plant there, they put a.
Soul.
Yeah, so there's that one, and there's a couple, I think the hospital in Bridgewater, Anyway, so, having said that, a couple things that, that I'm working on at the moment, like I said, the wind turbine is, I've been preoccupied with that. The other thing that's taken place is we have a maintenance contract with Enercon, which is the, the manufacturer of the turbine, and we're at the point now where we have to make some decisions about what kind of coverage we want on the maintenance program. It's, we wanna keep the turbine obviously up and running, but just to give us a blanket, you know, here's $75,000 and, you know, make sure it's running, we're not doing that. So, so we talked about NOVA, we talked about, NOVA's coming down, by the way, in, in the new year. The president from the UK, they're, they're gonna be on site.
One of the challenges around tidal is it's, you know, chicken and egg. We don't have the facility to handle it, and to build a facility to handle it and then not have it, so it's.
Yeah.
It's part of the work, work of all.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's back to chicken and egg, and, and even though we're the, the port of choice, what does that really mean? And is government really interested in giving us $30 million to, to build a laydown area, five-acre laydown area? So, we, we, along with the, the town, years ago, switched all our LED roadway lights, so we got all lighting. I think that's been, that, that was a good project. We're, we're so far, so good. There hasn't been too many ongoing repairs or maintenance of the, of the lights, even though we're coming into, I think, seventh year now, sixth or seventh year. So we're gonna start taking a look at what other things may go wrong in the next sort of five to 10 years. We looked at trying to see, in, in speaking with the tidal developers, one of the areas that they, they would like to see, and one of the things that we said to the tidal developers is that once the turbine's in water, there's really no, how would you say, benefit coming back to municipality, other than where the, the cable comes to shore, that property gets taxed. That's, that's basically all we get from them.
It's not a lot.
It's not a lot. So we've been trying to impress upon them, let's say, that there's a, not only a moral or an ethical, but there should be, they should be giving something back to the community because we don't put a resort, we don't put a tax on the resource to say, "Okay, that's, that's a resource that's owned by the Digby County citizens, and you're taking advantage of it." So we gotta find a way that companies that are gonna be spending 25, 30 million dollars on these, these turbines, that they can give something back to our community. And we're not sure what that is yet, we're still in discussions. I spoke with Jason Hayman, and he's the president of SME, and he realizes it too, but at the same time, it's, you know, they just can't give us money to say, "Here's..." Maybe it's community projects, maybe it's improvements or something like that, but there definitely should be something that says that if we allow these companies to come in and use our resource, that there's something that's gotta come back to the, to the, to the repairs.
It should go back to government, much like the CRTC does for television. It's a public airway that you have to pay a license to use.
It's like a license to use. So, you know, I've, you know, and at one time I was thinking, how could we tax them? Is it a poll tax or is it some kind of, you know, resource tax? And.
There's all kinds of codices in there too. I mean, back in the day, cable stations were responsible for providing community content and responsible for, you know, all these things you have to put in your regulations, but it's broken ground.
Yeah, and I think, I think they realize it too, but they're getting away with it. And at the same time, you know, at the same time, we don't wanna deter, deter them from, from setting up here and investing here. So it's, it's a fine, fine line, fine balance between how much do we really ask them to contribute and, and do they say, "Well, you know, we'll, we'll take our game and go elsewhere." So.
It's a federal resource, actually. They set up in the water, it's federal, so now you're gonna be able to prevent your bodies. Should be, should be returned.
Yeah. I always thought that solar is a much more immediate way to sort of make, especially not put solar on water, which conserves the water, which prevents.
Well, that's why I thought the lake would be perfect. You don't have to do it on land, it's out of the way, it's benign, it actually keeps the water cool. And, and so, I just thought it might be an opportunity for the town to take and explore.
It's not like wind.
No, it's not like wind.
The sun is usually always out, even if it's in.
And, and believe it or not, we've got some of the best solar regime in, in the province, right? So, on, on, on the flip side of what I do, I, I work on climate change projects as well, so, and you guys, I think, are doing some work down at the racket here, which is nice to see. And that was part of our, we, we did a joint effort on the Climate Action Plan back in 2013, that, that the town and the municipality were responsible for contributing for gas tax funding. And I think the racket was identified as one of the key areas, so I'm glad that, that work's being done. But I think we gotta do some more. We've installed five weather stations at the moment, it's been up for about We've installed five weather stations at the moment. It's been up for about a year and a half, almost two years. One's in Digby at the harbor at the port. We've got four others, one Freeport, Sandy Cove, Bear River, and Waymouth. What we want to do with those is collect the the data from it and try to do some modeling of our own. Where we could say, okay, in Digby, if if now that we've got some data, let's throw those numbers together and see what it would look like if there was a one-meter level of ocean rise, or if we had a storm coming from the east and and what that might look like at the wharf and and doing the same in Bear River. And in Bear River, what other opportunities there are for mitigating the flow of the tide. So that involves using the SCADA and the data that we've got, but also we've asked the province about the flydar, flying flydar. And this this area here, there's a couple of spots actually in Digby that were flown. But they didn't flow fly the whole thing. They only flew like, I think, closer down towards Tideview and up by the joggings a bit there and part of Bear River. It was the only two spots that really were flown that I have, that I know for sure.
There is mapping online that you can click on where the water will be twenty years, thirty years, fifty years in Nova Scotia. It's quite scary, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Just here. Annapolis is in a mess.
Annapolis in a big mess.
Big mess.
Yeah. So.
We'll give everybody an opportunity to ask questions.
I'm pretty much at the end.
We'll have your back. It's just a highlight.
I just wanted to do some some ideas out there, highlight it and see what your thoughts were as a as a collective.
Well, what can we do as a town?
Yeah.
I know we talked about, like, I'm looking to have to change my heating system and I'm oil.
Yeah. You know, that's going to be twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, it is. If I go to a central heat pump, which is probably where I had to go, I'm being told that's what it's going to cost. So I look at it and say, well, based on my age, heat furnace don't burn another twenty years in the old tank.
Yeah, that's true. But you're still burning. Yeah, you're burning. You're burning fuel.
Yeah.
Burning oil.
And with the changes I've made at my house, my oven last year was eleven hundred dollars, you know, so it's not a lot of heat. But I want to do some responsibility to agree.
Yeah.
And it's hard for a lot of people in this part of the province because of the income levels, poverty level.
And and I agree. And and how do we incentivize them to say, you know, you're burning oil? You need twenty-five thousand dollars to to do it. You have to insulate your basement. You have to insulate, make sure that the the windows and doors are are secure and tight. And at the end of the day, you know, what's the payback? What we found with the PACE program is the payback is is pretty good. It's somewhere between three and five years.
Yeah, I think the base is something we need to look at here.
It's something that you may want to look at and and maybe approach the municipality and see if we can piggyback on what we're doing because we had to set a reserve aside in order to to pay for that, right? So but we haven't maximized the reserve. And that's why, you know, do we look at other opportunities to extend the period? Like I said earlier, do we extend the the amount that's available? Because when you think about it, fifteen thousand dollars doesn't go very, well, it goes far, but it doesn't go far enough if you're trying to to do do it.
I love that heat pumps, I said, well, finance it from Nova Scotia Fire Department. I think the rate is.
Seven, seven percent, yeah.
Cheaper just for me to buy it and find it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
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 Based on the rates.
Yeah.
Funny thing with oil, another family have electric heat and they put heat pumps in. Their electric bill is better than our heat.
Yeah, because they're not using the.
Not using their electric.
Their electric, their electric baseboard. And the province has a time of day use. Me, I'm particular, I have, I'm on a time of day use. I have four heat pumps. I've got four ETS units. That's electric thermal storage. I have a Tesla battery for backup battery now. So in case the power goes out, I have my fridge, water pump, there's Wi-Fi, four or five plugs and four or five lights, but it's it's it's.
Off the battery?
The battery, yeah. Off the battery. It's about five kilowatts. And so it's doable. It's doable. But it it, when I did it, it cost me about fifteen thousand dollars. I had to upgrade the panels. Not everybody has a two-hundred amp service.
That'd be interesting to see how close we are in town to say if you had Queen Street, how many people would have to upgrade their service from a hundred amp service to a two-hundred amp service? Just put a heat pump in. Or if they hadn't charged an electric vehicle, you have to have.
Well, that's the other thing that that's coming. You're going to see in the building codes in Europe right now, the UK, by 2025 or 2027, all new builds have to be EV-ready. So that means not only you need a panel to support it and the wiring that's been supported as well.
Yeah, I had that question. I have a hundred amp panel with generator panel. And so I had somebody look at my house and said, I put two heat pumps in mini-spots. The panel I had, he said, but I won't put it in the central heat unless you're two hundred amp. But I had an electrical, a teacher at community college who teaches electricity, he asked me about my load on the hundred amp panel. And what I had, you know, and he said, yeah, you can still put a central heating system on under a panel. It would be close.
Yeah, you're pushing the.
I had everything in my house on my my generator panel except for the other. So I'm on my generator panel sixty amp.
Yeah.
It worked like forty amp, forty amp over there. But the contractor won't put it in unless it's two hundred amp.
Well, they don't want to take a risk, I suppose. But you're right, Paul. I think, and as you said that, I'm just thinking like, what's the impact going to be on the grid? Not just the the home, but all those those houses on Queen Street. If everybody did convert, what impacts it's going to have on the on the grid. So it's it's not just something we can just go really nearly here, let's convert everybody. But.
Any other questions for Terry?
I know. I mean, I need his small study one time, just a small project would it would be was the arena.
Yeah.
Our our apartment, it is a rated with possibly solar.
Yeah.
Maybe a small windmill.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've been talking to Sharon too about just on the same vein, about an electric Zamboni.
Yeah.
So there's no reason why we can't do an electric. Anyway, it's, we got to find where the money could come from, but.
Well, and that's what I was, well, we were hoping that there would be some grants that would be out there to.
My understanding is there's there's a couple that are going to be coming down. The feds are really taking a serious look at this. So come the spring, I think they're going to announce a few big programs. I was on a pro, I was on a webinar the other day. And same question, these climate change, you know, everybody's talking about climate change and, you know, but who's going to pay for it?
Well, ultimately, taxpayers.
But but yeah, ultimately taxpayers, but.
In Ontario, for example, a big building flat roof like that, people rent it, people rent their.
So yeah, maybe maybe the roof could support solar panels on the arena. So that might be something to take a look at.
We talked about that before, the condition of the roof, that the the optimum time is going to be when the roof gets ready to be replaced and the roof is in hard shape.
Yeah.
Then look at it because the grants are there for 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 solar.
Yeah. And and I mean, seventy-five kilowatts. I mean, it's big enough, I think, to to support seventy-five kilowatts. So so there's a shared solar coming out in the in the spring. So that might be something to look at.
Well, I had somebody do with the system on the house for solar. He said, basically, it wasn't really worth it for me because our bills aren't that high. But I've considered maybe next year, go for solar.
It's a it's an investment. But again, the payback is is something you got to look at. And are you are you doing it just to pay it back? And are you doing to support the environment?
Well, any other questions for Terry? Twenty-seven, so. So maybe spark some ideas here for us over the later.
I hope so. You know, it's it's something that we're all in this together, I guess, is what I would say.
Well, the racket route is a two hundred and sixty, seventy thousand project so far.
Nice.
They always go up a little bit more.
On budget?
Well, yeah. Well, it came in over budget. Here's an example where we we thought it was going to be one and now it's a much higher price.
Because of COVID?
It's busy contractors. Yeah, I know. Everything gets COVID. It's not all COVID.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me. Yep.
We're back in playoffs.
Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Everybody's had a chance to look at those. No, any errors or additions? If none, can we have a motion to approve? Okay. No, Paul, I think. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No business arising, Phil? You coming back, Phil, or?
Yeah, yeah. Probably.
Well, I also. We'll move on to staff reports. CAO.
Okay. In the planning department, we had remember, we have three development permits and two zoning information letter. You see, generated one hundred fifty dollars in fees. Just an update for everybody on the rezoning application for Second Avenue for Robin Pirate. So basically, it has been advertised that council has passed as the rezoning. So we're in the fourteen-day countdown for the appeal process. That property laps over the Christmas break. So probably in the new year, I'll I'll check. When we get back after Christmas, I'll check to see if UAR may just make sure that there are no appeals lodged and and for speed to.
If they do, if they get them, they'll they'll notify us right away if they get them.
Yeah. We always check anyway.
Yeah, it's good to check.
Just to make sure. Building department, so there's three development permits, generating hundred forty dollars in fees.
Quite a shit. That's quite a shit.
Yeah.
First of all.
Yeah. There's no shit. It's for the same person that's going to be doing the development, so. Fire department, so I'm getting some numbers. I'm getting some numbers for going back to, uh, July. So we had, in July, we had five town and two other municipalities calls. And out of those five town calls, four of them were for alarms, sound, so basically the false alarms.
Do we? Sure, that's a question I have.
Do we, church?
I thought that came up one time that we're giving our bylaw.
Yeah, we do have, we do have a bylaw, but I think we never know until this is July. Report. We never know to get no, no response from our communication from the fire department.
There's one of them I I know, but it's saying like several times.
Yeah.
So we got to.
But is there not a, is there a certain date that we're going to put? Or you're going to issue a? Basically, it's on after so many calls.
Yeah.
I think the bylaw is after the second or third call first, then you get a warning. And then after that, there's a administrative fee or a fine for every one because you're.
So that may be, we respond back to the partner and say, can you tell us, are these repeat offenders? As a timing matter.
Yeah. So in August, we had two town calls in seven municipalities. And September, four towns, five municipalities, two of those were alarm sounding. And there are five fire calls in October, one in town, four municipalities. In November, there was four in town and four in municipalities, plus three or four were alarm sounding. It seems to be, it is said to be quite a, quite a pattern. Most of it are either a lot of it are government buildings. So.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's something we need to address, find where they are and how they go after. I think it's seventy-five dollars in repeat. Hundred fifty, that's one.
Hundred fifty, yes, okay. Well, I guess my sisters had to pay seventy-five dollars.
So they celebrate, they celebrate the alarm sounding. Can we not ask the fire department to please put an address on those alarm sounds and then we'll know.
Yeah. Yeah, the thing, the thing is, it's not bad, but the thing is, it's no good for us to get six months out.
I understand that. From now on, if we could, like here, it says four alarms, three alarm sounds. Well, it doesn't mean a thing, but if they put two at, you know, forty-five at Warwick and one at Queen Street, then we'll know. There's repeat offenders, right?
Can we not get a report from dispatch every time that there's a call?
Yeah.
And that report to the authority and the fire chief.
Yeah. From dispatch. They just won't listen to anybody.
But anyway, that's not, that's your guy.
You can report.
All steps, all steps. So okay, so 2022 municipal boundary review. So basically, every the eight years, required to do a boundary review. And that's a 2022 is the year. It is correspondence under new business there that organizes everything. I just wanted to bring that up. Extended producer responsibility, so the province has an app finally that misses a start on the plan to consult with the NSF family, not the stakeholders on detail around the forthcoming extended producer responsibility this coming January. So this program is something that's been talked about quite extensively by municipalities and all the solid waste regions in the province. Because basically, this is money that we're not, we're not getting because basically, you know, when you buy a bottle of ketchup in Nova Scotia, the price isn't any different than it is in in Ontario or any other place. And it's this program, right, is all built into the national price, right? So we're already paying for it. We're just not reaping the benefits. And it's it's a provincial responsibility to put this program in place. And they have not, provinces chose not until this point not to want to put this in place for some reason. So hopefully, I think this is going to be good news. It should be some additional revenue for help offset replacement programs and stuff.
Now we go to waste check for the various ones.
No, it would go directly, it should go, it may come to the region, but it has to be divided off in the municipal units. Because waste check does not have any contracts. The contract contracts are directed with each other, you know. But that'll, I'm sure, I'd be aggressive at a waste check. Senior management team meeting. So we reviewed three HR policies, application policy, overtime standard, standby colleague policy and stop day policy as part of our policy review. These policies require no substantial changes in the only some administrative amendments. So I think the gender language and having that the policy shall be reviewed every five years. Therefore, the amendments would not require council approval because it didn't change. Therefore, the amendments would not require, uh, council approval because it didn't change the intent of the policy. It's basically changing he she to they or their or whatever. So basically, it's just, uh, so. And the twenty fifteen fire truck, we discussed that. Uh, so as we all, all know, the truck has been constantly out of service due to issues with the D E F unit. And so international is unable to supply necessary parts to address the issue. So the alternative is to fix, to fix the truck is to use, is to remove the entire D E F unit and replace it with their regular exhaust, so it will now be like our old five ton, which is reliable. So the cost is around fifty-five hundred dollars. The project somewhere, uh, to be completed, have been authorized, and this conversion is necessary uh, to put this truck back in service. Otherwise, it's just a hundred sixty thousand dollar loan order. And I think that's not, you need to have it back in service.
We just didn't use the five ton now for a while.
One ton, I should say, one ton.
And just five ton deal, just bring it out in the warnings, resulting in pushback. So it costs a little bit more, but it's done the, done the job, so.
So ragged ride medication. So construction is now underway and expected to be complete by before Christmas. So there was also a crack in the wastewater force main that was discovered during construction and was repaired. A M A zoning, a zoning meeting. And so the A M A organized a zoning meeting between the C A Os and newly formed Office of Healthcare Professional Recruitment within the Department of Health and Wellness. And the Deputy Minister and Associate Deputy Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. The focus with the Office of Healthcare Professional Recruitment was more on, of an introduction of who they are and what they, what services they provided. So the topic of community navigators were discussed, was discussed. And, uh, so from their perspective, uh, those communities with community navigators have been successful. And so the role of a community navigator is not to recruit health professionals, but providing support to a recruiter and promoting the community as a place to work, live, and play. The takeaway from the discussion of, with the Deputy and Associate Deputy Minister was the situation of the village of Bedeck, where issues similar to Bridge Town had surfaced. Somebody are updated on that issue. The Deputy Minister also discussed the investing candidate infrastructure program, and that's that the decision on program funding should be happening soon with application being accepted in the spring and summer. So the I C, I P is a program we've been waiting on to make application for the Mid Street project. So do you have any insight as to why so long?
Do you have any?
Yeah, provincial government.
Okay.
The federal government has their funds, the federal government, there's your, there's our share. And provincial government has to come up with their share before they can introduce the program, right? Because the municipal units have to come up with their share when they put the applications in and get accepted. So basically, that's, that's where the whole rough has been with the provincial governments. D B campground lease, so the assignment of lease and amended lease documents have been executed. And, uh, currently having discussions with the surveyor concerned consolidation of subdivision of leased property. And so I guess the first step would be to have a sketch drawn up for review before we actually do, do these end of proceeding. Community navigator, so I met with the C A O of the district and the two members of the Help Foundation to discuss what a proposal from the foundation might look like in respect to a bunch of possible asks from the foundation of funding from the municipal units. There'll be more meetings in the new year.
And I spoke to R M L A, Jill Walter, about positioning whether there's funding out there, as you fell as it discussed. So she was going to investigate it.
Basically, there, I believe there could be funding to the Office of, uh,
Yeah, the, that.
News Department.
News Department.
Yeah. Because we talked about them supporting other community nav, navigators. A very good example where one might be, I had a phone call from a doctor in California, had D B connections. Uh, has surgery experience, pediatric, uh, wants to do family medicine, is a family medicine doctor. Uh, there may be some licensing challenges, I referred that to the recruiter. There's two recruiters for right around Southwest Nova Scotia, and they got hired hundreds of people. This person has not heard from Nova Scotia Health Authority yet.
So there's a doctor that wants to come here and has to have a phone call. So I reached out to the family and make them aware that we didn't write the law on this, somebody else did, but we're working through this. So we had somebody to focus on it. Well, that's the problem.
Well, last week was COVID nineteen restrictions, so they basically started in nine a m. on Friday to seventeen. And last week, I guess at least for the new year, until further notice, uh, they put physical distancing and mask requirements in place, back in place. And, uh, so I've, uh, put in place a workplace COVID nineteen directive, standard operating procedure to reflect these new restrictions affecting the town's workplaces. And, uh, so probably look for more tomorrow. There's an update tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, any questions for the C A O? What's going on? Director of Public Works.
Hey. So, so just hit some highlights I guess down there, the film's already touched on some of it, so I'm probably gonna go in depth. Um, so you'll probably see on the sidewalks, we are doing the fifty fifty combination for the salt and sand. Uh, combination on the majority of the sidewalks, except for the hills and the downtown area D B. Um, so still have a few issues with downtown parking of some vehicles. Um, today, we actually put up no parking songs for the winter parking bank, you'll see them down the posts. Um, we actually had them in front of town hall here for the last couple of years, exactly the same song. Um, so I did finally meet with some people today to explain to them why they can't park down there. Uh, there's still three vehicles, we haven't been successful, so I was just talking to Bruce about it. But luckily I get the R C P involved, so we can make some phone calls.
That truck left.
Yeah.
So I, he left it hurt, too.
Yeah, his, uh, his landlord told him to.
Yeah, okay. I had that young boy before, though.
So we're working on it, because it does, it impedes our transport, as you can see, because we got it all around. When you do downtown, you just, you're making that barrier you don't want, basically. Um, so had the, had the employees over, the, the public work employees at the reunion working quite a bit. Um, cutting out around lagoons, um, cutting all the trees and the bushes, and we cut up the fence over there and stuff. Just, uh, so it makes our mowing and bush hogging not much easier and prevents trees not falling on the fence causing damages. Um, we did do a little bit of work for the municipality, one of the lift stations in Bearville. It was an emergency repair of some broken pipes they had at their main lift station. And they, they were built for this work. So Nova Scotia power crashed the trees around town, except for the ones that we got. Um, it's part of the, kind of made a little agreement with them, they cut the trees, at their cost, we clean up the trees and stuff for them, which, which we did, worked out well for us. Um, gee, so all, John Dare serviced all of our equipment, uh, for the year. Um, the, the truck that the C A O, C A O and I are working on, uh, we're gonna kind of put it on hold for it now, see how things go with the new five ton. And if this does fix the problem, then we may not proceed with moving forward on it. But we'll discuss it once we know if the truck's working or not. And if the truck's still not working up for us, then we'll put it back on the table, so. Um, so our capital project, uh, Second Avenue, uh, Second Avenue means St. George Street, the barriers are all installed. Uh, the greenway project, sidewalk hasn't poured. Um, we'll finish the, the grading in the spring. Basically, it's got the gardens, the garden to put in on the back half of the sidewalk, and the shrubs to plant once we receive them. Uh, the rack of road project, obviously can already touch on that, sorry. Um, so, uh, safety, the deck at McBride Park would be the fountains there. Uh, the, the deck is, is rotten, we've had to patch it in six different spots. Um, so basically, I talked to the C A O about it, and it's like, you know, what council like to do with it? Whether we replace the deck, uh, tear the deck off and fill it full soil, plant, make a garden out of it, or what, what they'd like to do. Um, it is quite high, if you, if you look at it, so it probably should have a rail on it if we do decide to put a deck back on it. So if we do put the rail and, rail and deck back on it, you're probably gonna be in the three or four thousand dollar range, I imagine, so.
You can never turn the water back on. No one ever seems to know why the water, why the fountain shut off.
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
It's a shame you're, uh, having an operation, have a thought, have a record of that.
Park there for, uh, in honor of somebody and.
Well, it is, it's Charlie, there's a plaque there, that, there's one, Charlie McBride.
There's a beautiful black there.
Yeah, McBride's Park. So we have to maintain that, if you just don't name something that a couple of years later sort of like.
It may not have been the best place for it, but.
Yeah, it's a beautiful spot to sit now, you know, now that you're, you, you don't have the prison sinks door to torment them. You have the air there, but, all right, it doesn't make sense to have a hole there to ground it. Whenever we use the fountain again, so probably takes more sense to take the, send Darren in and apply it there. Remount the plaque somewhere.
Put like garden.
Or a nice garden.
Yeah.
Green, yeah.
You can tear the deck off of it and leave the foundation if you want, call it, make it into a garden. That would be a lot cheaper solution.
Not a green space.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're.
Yeah, make, make a little green space. Because it does get damaged by, by kids and stuff, and school fund, so if there was a green space, it likely wouldn't see the damage that we do now. So I guess how some of the holes that beat into it.
Yeah.
From them jumping on it.
Yeah.
Right? And then it was brought to our attention with the hole in it, so.
In the future years, put some money in for a couple of inches and stuff.
Okay, so.
Especially if you're gonna have more residential up around there.
Yeah.
So people might wanna walk down to that green space.
Yeah, have that roof open, too.
Yeah. They have to fill it in, put some larks.
Well, likely just the way it is, because it's patched for now, and in the spring, pare it off and fill the whole soil, that's fair.
Get the top off, and then we actually look at that, look at what's in there, funded, what, what is. Yeah, I, I don't know, ran for, maybe mine, or maybe kind of back. It ran for a couple, a couple of years, and then it just stopped, and I always wondered, you know, it was long before I was, I'm still a kid, and I'm running.
Was it just one or?
I don't remember now, I just know going up, why the fountain was flowing, and then suddenly it disappears. Yeah, presidency with thunder.
Cool, it's under that traction anyway. Jimmy, awesome.
Anyway, does that seem reasonable? Yeah, turn it, the plants and greens, basically.
Flag on for you.
Any questions for it?
Just to comment on the snow removal thing, I don't know if we do this or not, but should we maybe put in a thing in our newsletter being courteous to our snow removal crew? Just because this, this morning, there were two different times that I saw people leaning on the horn and flipping off Darren when he's trying to, trying to move snow, and it's just like, well, one of them waited all of like twelve seconds for him to get out of the road. And it was fishermen driving through town and, uh, yeah.
People with municipality.
Uh, yeah, probably.
He invited, because he does do that to me.
Oh, no, I don't think it, it was actually being good, but they're just, let's go.
Yeah, maybe something that, you know, let's be nice to each other. You know, when they're trying to remove snow and dirt, give them a moment. Yeah. Yeah, maybe we should do something off like that.
It's only New Year's resolution.
New Year's resolution, right, be nice. Because you hear it all over the news, you know, let's be nice, you know, you hear doctors writing saying, let's be nice to each other. Yeah, yeah, might be a good idea, because he, you know, he's doing a job, and he, he loves doing it, but it's not a fun job either, downtown. Okay, yeah, good idea. Anything else for it?
What do you fix on the, the new, uh, new five ton?
Uh, they towed it down Friday.
I just wanted to ask, I don't know what says, but you're not the part yet. Why do they call it the new one again?
It's gonna be the old one. The bridge, old bridge, don't you care to help?
We'll have a twenty year old truck that will call the new one.
The way it's going.
Yeah. Okay, uh, moving on to the director of finance report.
The, uh, statement of operations is there, uh, again, has no notable variances except for deed transfer taxes. And I know I have to say this in there every time, but it just amazes me how it continues to, to grow even with each time. Uh, so to be in, end of November, what's that, uh, eight of our twelve months, we're gonna be at a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Uh, normally, a normal year is sixty thousand dollars for the entire year, sixty-five thousand. We've seen this ramping up, so, uh, so it's, we could likely triple our, our normal deed transfer tax by the end of the year. And normally I report because I just say it's an indicator of economic activity, but it's actually turning into a fairly big piece of cash at, at, at this point in time.
I would be nervous about saying next year is gonna, well, next year, they're predicting another good year, but after that, there will.
Yeah, it's not a good.
It's not gonna, well, I hope it, I wouldn't cement that in the budget.
Be questioning by the time tax bills come out the first part of next year, assessment's changed.
Up thirty-seven percent Southwest Nova real estate values.
Yeah, unfortunately, the assessment is up about seven point six percent residentially, and the cap rate is five point five, Tom. So we won't see that, we won't see a lot of that until, until next year.
So they limit cap, too.
And unfortunately, even though, yeah, we had a discussion with P B S C today on that and, uh, had revealed a couple of things to me that they've never said publicly before. Uh, they're looking at the trailing twelve months when they're trying to predict market value. They're not looking at a state date of January one, twenty twenty-one. That's not the market idea for this.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh, financial condition indicators, uh, just to give you the short versions of the good. Town of D B is one of only eight of the twenty-six towns to be rated overall low, so, so that's good. And that's primarily because we're sitting on a strong balance sheet, uh, our cash levels are, are strong. Uh, the bad is we're poor and seem to be not, all the word climbing a bit, we're not climbing as much as others, and we're, we're actually getting older, our, our population. So our median household income is thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars, the town's average forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. And like I said, although our financial position is strong, our infrastructure assets are old and need renewal. Drive down any street in D B, we can see that. Uh, in the two thousand and sixteen, which is the latest data they have, employment rate is thirty-nine point five percent, and the town's average is forty-eight point three percent. So you can see that we have a lot of people not working for various reasons. The AIM Asset Management Conference, so that's the, uh, Atlantic Institute of Asset Management, um, that I went to in Dartmouth, uh, was very good, and it was nice to, uh, sit down with some of the people we're gonna be working with because AIM helped us apply for the F C M grant that we, we are going to get. It's ninety-five percent sure, and hopefully in January, we'll be working with AIM. And they're gonna help us through various parts of the asset management program. A lot of the, the documentation and things that we need, and, and primarily, they're going, one of the big things they're gonna do is help us hire contractors to do a lot of our linear assets. So our roads, our wastewater, water, uh, storm drainage, and get that document and a preliminary condition report. So we're, we're, they're gonna help us get going on the project. And that's gonna help us do a preliminary asset program. And that's going to help us do a preliminary asset program, which basically is when you're getting into the financial dollars. And, and that'll also help us educate us, ourselves, all of us in what our rules are. Like our council, levels of service, levels of service gets determined by council. Where do we want to be? How much risk do we want to take on our sewer mains, our water mains? Uh, you know, do we want to ensure that we never have breaks? Well, if we do that, it's expensive. We have realistic expectations, that means less expense. Um, other than that, uh, most of it is something that I've mentioned before. The doubling of the gas tax, so yeah, unless there's any questions, those are the main points.
Just the R C N P caught my attention. We are operating. We live a staff sergeant, so the staff sergeant's coming out of the tag, so that's, you know, this is, it's one of those cases again where we're paying for something that we're not getting. But that goes for a long, long time. We have to have that discussion with them and say, hey, listen.
And we still have at staff hall, we still haven't, haven't heard anything about the, what's going to happen with this big retro cost of the R C N P across Canada that are paying. I don't know whether anyone else has heard anything or. Uh, it was interesting when I met, uh, at the AIM concert talk, uh, conference, talking to the, uh, the, uh, P E I representatives, saying that the P E I provincial government is actually going to cover the overage. That would be fantastic if we heard something like that in Nova Scotia.
There's a large difference in size, members, but still.
Well, it's still per capita, it's, it's the same cost.
We're paying, as far as R C P costs, we're still probably the highest per capita, I'm telling you. The problem is as far as that, we were the last time we did the study.
So should we be making note that we're functioning without a staff sergeant paying for it?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we, yeah, we'll have that conversation again. We, we've done that in the past too, yeah.
Yeah, there is still a process.
Well, it's, we, we got a rebate in the last contract because we found while we, we were paying too much and they discovered that after.
That was a, a discovery of administrative error going on for multi-years against us. They said, oh, good news, we'll correct it for you, but forget about the retro that you will make.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll have that same discussion with this.
Yeah, and they have no mechanism to back those.
I believe that municipal affairs are going to be having some discussion with justice over policing costs and, yeah. Sort of indicated by the deputy minister.
So the cost for a gun, the services outside is not there.
Especially when it comes to, uh, the, basically the amount of money that municipalities pay for policing and have so much absenteeism. And you're paying for bodies that aren't there, right, such as the staff sergeant and other ones, like, we're paying for five members plus a portion of the staff sergeant, right? And if, if we only got three actual bodies in the detachment, then, you know, the discussion should be, somebody should be covering for, you know, people on paternal or leave or sick leave or any other leave, right?
That's the problem with the general public cast, they assume we pay for X amount of police officers from that detachment. So logically, any part of a day or night, you should be able to find an officer somewhere in this town. Many, many, many nights you can't.
So it's taken over them. The, the commissioner of R C P, the, I can't recall her name now, says the R C N P should not be a municipal police, it should be getting a, it's, they're not a municipal police force, they should be getting a, that's, I think, in the same sentence, she said, that's 20 years away from that happening. Yeah, no, no, you're just. I, I've experienced plenty of times in the fire department where you call for a police officer at 3 o'clock, have a fire and and their maintenance or westport, so you're waiting, yeah. Because they, here they treat it as a regional detachment, even though we're two contracts, they look at the, the office looks at it as regional, so the town officer, that town physician could be in westport, yeah.
And our bylaw officers experience problems where he's called for help, the system gets no response.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, plenty of.
Just one clarified question on that, where, where you got the 2016 media post holiday compare to the towns? Did you mean compared to the provinces?
Compared to all the towns and the provinces in the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for that, on that? I guess if nothing, we'll move on to a special constable.
Any short and slightly premise report for the month of November into December? Uh, ten Carlton, still a little change. Ninety-one Second Avenue, uh, had, uh, spoken with the owner of this property about the previous complaints received by the town. The owner has agreed that in the spring of 2022, the grounds around the property will be properly maintained. And he also expressed that either the building would come down to allow for a duplex or vacant lot. The decision will come, uh, at a later date. Seventeen Water Street. Uh, the process of bringing down the disease treaty on the property has begun with the overhanging limbs being brought down first and the remainder being cut and removed within a week depending on the weather. Nine Water Street, I had spoken with the owner of this property in regards to the unsightliness and the number complaints received. I've allowed a timeframe of two weeks for cleanup and informed the owner that if the garbage, old building materials and derelict vehicles were not removed by the end of the two weeks, then an order to remedy shall be posted up to the premise. The owner of the restaurant has been given a copy of the solid waste resource management bylaw 2020 dash one, and advised to contact Digby Salvage to arrange a weekly commercial pickup and to have the owner replace the busted up garbage bin with a properly constructed new bin. Two sixty-seven Shore Road, I had spoken with the owner of this property regarding the unsightliness and instructed the owner to have this property cleaned up within seven days. As administrator for Danger Shore and Sightly, I had instructed the owner to inform his tenants that the derelict vehicle, a van, is to be removed as soon as possible, if not, it would be toned at the owner's own expense.
It looks like some new construction happening next door, so.
Yeah.
That's not his though.
No, not his. We would hear where some of the buildings that we had in the city.
Onto the protective services report for the month of November into December. Uh, closed circuit TVs, all cameras are operating, we're still waiting on the installation boxes and there's a change that the antennas have arrived, so it's just the boxes we're waiting on. Parking patrol, one warning and one parking ticket. Uh, civic address, one civic and one point added to the month of November. Uh, there's no change to dog control report. Um, crossing guards report that school break would begin Tuesday, 21st, obviously that had changed and they would return on Thursday, the 6th of January, 2022, that's up near also. Um, nothing to report for solid waste manager, management. Taxi licenses. Um, Admiral Taxi owner has replaced his original vehicle due to a motor vehicle accident. No one was injured, just damage to Mr. Oliver's car. Another vehicle has been inspected and will be a temporary replacement until the original has been repaired and inspected.
Yeah, I just, I noticed some chatter on social media and I experienced it one in the last week that people are getting taxis here. Do we have any say into that or do we just license them? And I don't know why, but I just, I saw some comments and then I know somebody did call.
They're licensed under the town, but they're, they're owned independent company.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't really have any, but I do know some people playing the services. Any questions from Bruce on any of that?
I've got a couple, just, um, ten Carlton Street. We're heading in January to our fourth year of that building sitting there. I know there's not a lot that we can do, but there's an unoccupied building that has just been.
Can tell you that.
Oh, tax illness, yeah. The other thing I'd like to see is, uh, when you give somebody seven days or 14 days or so, it would be nice if you had a date that it either issued or when it is to be, uh, completed by.
Well, as of those, those two, uh, properties, nine Water Street and, um, where's it? Nine Water Street, that's due on the 22nd of this month, which means, no, it's due on the 21st, I go on the 22nd post premise.
I mean, we don't know when you say.
I'm going to have those in my.
I would like it.
Yeah.
So when you look at it, when you read it, you know that it's coming out in overall.
So, so just because it posts on the premise doesn't mean it's cleaned up on 21st, right, or 22nd? So that's going to go another way, and I'm no, no offense, but.
No, no, but I mean, I have to give her, have to give her so many days.
But we've given, but we've given too many days now, like, why can't we just send Digby Salvage in there, clean that up and send them a bill?
You, you need to have an order. An order had to be put, put in place. Unless Cat Council wants to change the procedure, right? And we can only change the procedure under the guidance and what is required under the municipal government act of danger on, on site proportion, but basically we have to give, uh, notice, right? And we have to, there's a certain thing, so ba- basically what Bruce does when he gets a thing, he investigates. And usually the first thing that, that he does, if he does in fact find that there is an issue, he gives a directive. And that's what he's referring to in this, and we've had the discussion in the last few days concerning directives and that it's going to be as short as possible. Well, that's what I was going to say, it, you, you, this one is an ongoing issue all the time, we know that. So the day you go down, can't you issue the order that day, give a directive at the same time, listen, clean this up two weeks, I have to post it today.
I, I can put.
This is going to be nice and kind. Yeah, I just wanted.
That's basically what, what I'm asking, council, if that's what council wants, not to, to just go and slap orders. If you guys are going to get the flag, it's not going to be me, right, or it's not going to be.
Well, we'll turn it next.
I know, but that's what I think we might do. So, so I guess ba- ba- basically, that's what I'm, I'm saying, what we need, we need to have, have council tell us that that's the course of action that you want. That there's, there's no more, that basically when you get a complaint, if it's a valid complaint, an order is issued. That's what council wants, and to put that forward as a directive, and that's what will be followed.
It's, it's.
Well, I had two ladies, one on Queen Street and one on, uh, one on King Street and one on Layers Road. And, and the conversation is that, you know, the one thing that really upset me is the town not following through on their unsighty violence. Um, it's a, and, and she was really upset about the green cars being up on sidewalks and had to walk around or push them off the, uh, you know, but she said, oh, in my law.
She is, she is, never mind, she has a copy of my law, she does. But I think, like, if, if there's a, somebody, of course, you have to for all or none, but sometimes it's somebody that just, you know, they're, they're new, they're not aware, but some of these repeat offenders, I just don't think there's any need for any directives anymore, just. You see it, you issue the order and it's a, hey, listen, clean this up.
I have no.
Yeah.
Problems with that, but it has to come from you.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, because especially this one we're talking about, it's, it's constant.
You don't need.
It'll get cleaned up in two weeks or maybe Wednesday, but next week it'll be the same way.
Nine Water Street, when I talked to him, uh, the owner.
Yeah.
He just had surgery done.
Yeah.
So, yes, I was being a nice guy and I extended him a week.
Yeah.
But that ends this week, so when I put the, the, uh, remedy, uh, orders for remedy.
That's 14 days?
I don't think it has to be 14 days.
Or what is?
So it's another 14 days.
So it's another 14 days. Well, I, I think. So you give him four days and then it'd be seven.
So he gets 14 days and then you give him another 14 days.
So it's not 14 days, you're saying, no?
Yeah, I think we need to change something.
Well, he's just saying it is not 14.
But it's kind of ridiculous, you know, like, I know that person, no intention of moving a, a finger.
Well, that's, I guess, as Tom said, we need to tell, we need to say, hey, listen, there's no walking in saying you have time to clean this up, here's your order. And that'll make some scramble, maybe, you know, for some. Anyway.
I think I can go as short as seven days, when orders are remedied, depending on the, uh, circumstance.
Yeah, and like we go back to that nine Water Street, that's so public too. You park there, you just see the garbage bags and the.
So one derelict vehicle, he has two there now.
Yeah.
All the garbage.
And they back it up when we go over with the garbage.
So, yeah. So the, the solid waste issue, like the, the restaurant itself, how long does it take to do that? Like for him to put a garbage container back there and get Digby Salvage start picking up?
He was to contact Digby Salvage, so when I go back there and he has it, then I can find it.
So he gets a fine for that?
Well, yeah, it's, I mean, commercial, commercial pickup, he has to arrange for that.
Yeah, he has to.
So, so in town.
Want to do that, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, I, it's just frustrating, it's nothing against anybody, but it's just so frustrating that, you know, another.
A lot of times.
Yeah.
Uh, very rare to that, people phone in, they put the complaint, won't give their last name, will not come in to fill it in proper. I'm going to do my highest form and I have no secret.
It shouldn't matter, it shouldn't matter if someone calls and said, this place on Water Street's a mess and you walk down and see it, it's a mess.
Yeah, but how would that do that to the property though?
It shouldn't have to come from a plan.
A complaint like that, a written complaint, that's, that's. Well, it's the way it's always been.
It's got to change then, because that's crazy.
We'd love the, to make us feel better, I know you stopped in here, the towns, the armpits and all, we're struggling with the same thing.
Yeah, this is.
I mean, I had, I, I meant to take a picture of one on twelve Carlton Street, the, uh, the beehive, the big piece of plywood bough, uh, taped onto the, or tied onto the windows, it's broken.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, that's fixed.
He's going now. He's taking it and putting it on the inside of the building.
Yeah.
So it will not fall off the building, but fall inside.
Well, something already fell, so.
Just to let you know that the policy that this would be passed by council, uh, complaint shall be received in a, this is a dangerous one, slightly, complaint shall be received in a written format, either a town Digby complaint form or via letter or email. Each complaint must include the complaint, its name and contact information, complaint must be signed by complaint, anonymous complaints will not be investigated.
Okay, so that's if I have a complaint, but if, if we're driving, like Bruce driving that, as bylaw officer sees a violation.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he can act, he can act on, he can act on that.
Let's jump.
Yeah.
Yes, it says, notwithstanding above, administrator may act in the absence of a complaint where the administrator is satisfied that a dangerous situation is present or where it is deemed property posing a need to safety concern. Uh, it's dangerous.
But I think the, the ones we're all speaking of needs to be addressed for the life. Cause it's just, you park at the post office, you watch, you see garbage bags and.
It's a profit spot of town.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's going back to the, it's right on.
And she goes around it now, like nails in the road and work complaining today.
Seven days to remedy, when I post it, you'll bring it into the, well, we'll, we'll be on Christmas break. But as long as I get back, I can bring Digby Salvage there and say, hey, let's clean this up.
So December the 30th. If you're, you're, Thursday.
Yes.
Okay, well, you know, we want that with, written as short as, you know, if you get a complaint, issue the order. And we'll take the heat.
We'll take the heat.
We'll take the heat. Yep. End of message, we'll get a, with some, you know, some just aren't going to care, but, yeah.
So the other issue I have, while Matt is, is the parking. Walk by the base complaining twice about, uh, employers, employees parking on the road. I guess they complained to Ben as well.
Oh, yeah, they can.
You can tell them not to park in our front a lot.
Yeah, tell them not to park in that part of the.
Well, then, then this is, then we got a problem in that one.
Yeah, yeah, we have. Yeah, yeah, we have a problem because pe- people.
That's right.
If they, you know.
I'm just saying, yeah, we have a problem, and we talk about parking eighty years ago, I understand, but.
Last two years.
People don't get it for some reason, they just don't get that, you know, parking in front of a store, doing a, a rental store, doesn't let your customers come in.
That's, that's four customers.
Yeah.
That's four cars, cause you gotta remember, you, you know, Bruce comes to work at eight thirty, a car to park at eight thirty, leave at ten thirty, next one, so.
Yeah.
The only four cars, but, last two years, and there's no problem on place parked down.
Oh, you have a pet. Uh, a person parking in front of a building for probably ten years, uh, Scopeshe Banks complained about it, every half hour, every two hours, she couldn't move her car. Back and forth, back and forth, she did that for years.
She retired.
Yeah, she retired, but, there you go, right, like, who has the time to move the car every two hours for ten years, like, it just drives you crazy.
But all you can do is try to say to the, the employers, that Bruce can go down and mark the car, it's moved, it's moved under the law. But the employers need to understand, park up there, they do it.
I, I don't know how you do it.
Well, you know, a lot of them have what they call a retail, uh, their, their service fee up, and that's good.
Thing is, that business is between a department store, furniture store, and a bank.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and it's usually the same people complaining, but.
So is this on the subject of parking with all the U-Haul trucks parked, did, did they ask?
Yes.
I think they did, nothing was ever communicated, and I've had a lot of people ask.
Oh, social media's whole, that's why.
Yeah. I gave, I gave them all the.
Well, that was, uh, you think, well, that was eight, eighteen people, seventeen, eighteen people taking it, staying in town, sending lots of money, so. If it was the middle of summertime down there, it'd be a problem, yeah, yeah. But it was, yeah, it was fun to see what was the speculation on.
Sandpaws back.
Yeah.
Oh, the old sandpaws.
But anyway, parking, I seen you mail somebody, so nail them. And then the directives, the repeated offenders, you issue one right away.
Sure. Park where we park.
Okay.
Yeah.
Simple.
The park for driving. Well, as far as complaints, I still have to have paperwork until I've changed.
Yeah, that part, but if you see a violation.
I see it, yes, that's why I went to Diamond Waters.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that, that, that's, that's the thing, if we get it, we get an email from a council member, both companies, and he goes out and, and he does it on.
That's what I did.
His, yeah, officer discretion, not doing it based on an actual complaint, right, uh, that's, that's a different point. Like, the thing is, uh, we have people that'll call with a, and say, listen, you know, I wanna complain about someone's other next door, but don't you tell them that I'm, I'm the one that's complaining, and I don't wanna write my name down or sign anything, right, I just want something done. Right, those are the ones that we have, you know.
Well, according to the bylaw, that's not the procedure, you can't do it.
Yeah, but the thing is, what we can do, Bruce can go out and walk, and if he thinks that there's something, something there, he can act on it, right? But it's not acting on that, not, you know, basically, the reason for having a signed complaint is in case we end up in court.
Yeah.
That's why.
I try to help whenever I get that sort of thing, Bruce, like, again, the pictures to you, and the time, and so you have all those.
All, all, all you guys have done that, so all, all the counselors have done that, and I appreciate them.
What about his sweater?
My brother has a singing team, and my mom says, so I don't sing anything.
That'll be a shame. It's not good, you know, I, I saw on social media, someone complained about they were in the crosswalk, and a car went by, and they didn't stop, and they knew who it was. So they ran to social media, they complained, why not pick up the phone, call the RCP?
Yeah.
They say, this guy knew the man, he opened the crosswalk, instead of, so same type of complaints, they, they won't go where they should go. Okay, I think you got some direction. I, I've been looking at the M, MGA, and it does accept a date of different, different types of orders, and, and mainly around, uh, demolition orders, so, but we go with U seven days, I think seven days should be the minimum, I think.
Remedy, you know what?
Or the maximum, maximum.
Max, yeah, okay.
Particularly for repeat offenders.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, such a we deal with all the time, say, people.
You're still gonna have, I mean, you're still gonna have some discretion, because, you know, when you go and investigate something, especially if it's a first-time offense. There may be different, uh, the circumstances may more, more die, or something too.
Well, it could be demolition, and, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I also deal with properties that, the back of the house looks like a, a junkyard, and it's probably bigger than the town of Dell.
Victoria Street.
So, SUNY Streets, for example.
Yeah.
Still on Victoria Street?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, just looking at, I can deal with your own.
But I mean, like, you know, that's, that's a major cleanup, but, and we'll foresee that person paying for it. Or breaking back taxes, but, even then.
I know.
It's incredible.
Yeah, lots of it, yeah. Don't put my back there.
I already hit.
Okay, well, move on, there's no correspondence, draft, uh, new business, draft Digby Park, the provincial levy file, it's something we need to, to move along, Tom, I guess. Yep, so basically, uh, this is, uh, basically for the committee to review and to see whether, uh, with this bylaw, if there are any, especially if there are major amendments, the thing that we have to realize is that this, that this bylaw is saying, the wording is gonna be exactly the same for the municipal district if it has to pass the same bylaw, right? So, if there's some, some amendments actually made, and it could, uh, kick the can down the road quite a ways, because we gotta then defer with the municipality fund it, whether they're gonna be agreeable to those major amendments. But basically, there has been, been some, uh, consultation between the two units and, and, and that, and this is basically the, the, the finished draft, so the only difference between this one and the, one the district of Digby will head is the, is the, Lerd will head the municipality and the district of Digby instead of the town of Digby. But everything else, all meat and potatoes in, the argument's gonna be the same.
Well, the province would be interested in seeing this?
You know, technically, they're supposed to, but I know they don't, but.
Because the province has already seen it.
Then this, this bylaw, yeah, through the process, yeah, okay. So ba- basically, when we went through the process for the actual provincial act, and the product members built, the, uh, council of the legislative office of the legislative council, I guess that's what, anyway, they had, uh, a lawyer there to look at that, at the same time that she was reviewing the legislation, she made some, uh, offers of, of amendments, some things, and, uh, basically, we incorporated those, so, basically, uh, basically, this, these, this bylaw almost mirrors the, uh, legislation, cause a lot of the stuff in the legislation that's in, in the bylaw.
So, what are we looking at, timing this with the district, so they won't, uh, that's.
So ba- basically, uh, if council's good with rec, uh, the committee tonight is good with recommending to council, our first reading will be in the first of January, uh, so theirs will be the end of January, I believe. And so, uh, then we'll be able to do the first of February, second reading, and it'll be the end of February, second reading.
And we want this ready for April first.
Yeah, April one. Yeah, it's supposed to, so, there's still a fair amount of work, cause we gotta, we gotta select the committee and get the, that, that committee in place.
Is, is everybody had a chance to read this and feel comfortable with, or do you want to read more time to review it, or what, what's your position on it?
Do you see anything wrong with it?
Last page says that urban chicken bylaw. Well, I'm, well, I'm.
Chicken.
Yeah.
Well, it's the same, maybe it says that.
I thought that they'd be on purpose.
So we noticed it, we looked at it.
A hundred points.
Just, just you who actually reads the last page.
Yeah.
Kind of a silly question, but it, it has what they're applying us for first and second fine, you know, like, uh, you know, do what they have to do. Is a five thousand dollar fine high enough for a place like the Pines in size of Upper Penn?
Well, I think the Pines, yeah, it talked with Yarmouth, they've never had to do it. And they've been, they, their bylaws been in place for five, their marketing levies been in place for quite a while. And they've never had to do it, they never have done it either, it's all based on trust and faith, and I think we could appeal to the Pines Hotel. They decided not to pay, and, and some public discussions.
Their room nights are published through.
Yeah, those numbers are there, so you'll know, yeah, they, they report the numbers, so. And I think I'm correct on Yarmouth, that they've never had a, they've never had an issue, there was some early on discussions, some people not in favor of it, but, uh, they've all jumped on board now, and it's brought in something like a million dollars, I don't know how many years now, uh, to Yasna, who does a great job of marketing.
Yeah, their biggest opponent was, uh, was against it, right off the back, and, uh, once he got good up and running, he's a biggest, uh, fan of the whole process.
And we have nearly, I don't think our number of rooms are much different than Yarmouth's, because of the pockets.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're pretty close, we're a lot smaller, but, uh. What's, anybody want time to review this, or you feel comfortable and make a recommendation to council? Make a recommendation to council, then still review it, and then a council, we have an issue, then we can address it at council.
This is, this is basically for, for, for you, it's, yeah.
I would suggest we do that, but, and then a council, if it passes, pass it, if not, there's some changes that need, that we need to feel need to be made, then we can have that discussion. But if we delay it to council for, uh, well, then we're gonna, we're getting close to the timeline, and, uh, some of them wanted it done by January one, but that wasn't how, you know, that was in, uh, sign, and, yeah.
I think, yeah, that organization was expecting us to hand in that check on April first, too.
No, and there's, it's, no, it's gonna take a while for the money to get collected.
It's gonna be at least one month.
Yeah, one month or something, so.
For, to get some money.
So I'd move to make a recommendation for council.
I'll second that.
Second that.
And then, review, go through it, uh, the staff have done a lot of work on it already, and as Tom said, you know, the problems is already there. This pretty much mirrors, well, all, all the legislative mirrors what's in place, considering the bylaw, what is in place in Yarmouth, what's in place in Kate Britain, and other, and even HRM, so basically, it's all, uh, and that's why I don't understand why the province just didn't put legislation in, given that's all municipal units, the authority, you're putting a levy, and all we needed to do was, uh, introduce a bylaw, right? So, basically, the thing is, is that, you know, in America, the levy was the same with Yarmouth, uh, Yarmouth kind of wouldn't do it without having the district involved, because of where, where the hotels are situated, right, and it's the same, same there here. Good, okay, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Many days, none, so that'll move to council, any further questions, you're right off then. A draft job description. This is the conversation that's been going on. Comments on it, does it mean we, uh, well, we, we didn't do it for a year, or had that discussion, we actually didn't do it for a year.
Yeah.
Okay, I can't remember.
Too.
I almost could, to get some type of draft you'd have to do.
Draft, yeah, something. So ba- yeah, I, I don't even remember. Ba- basically, it was, uh, you know, uh, the, the job description basically was drafted for council to, for council review and some input, and to see whether this was, this is the type of thing that council, uh, would like to fund, or in it also, not only funded, but whether this was, fit within the needs that we have, right? Uh, when I drafted it, um, you know, I struggled with what, what the title of the, you know, the position title, but the, and, uh, that's what I settled with, uh, it's not Caribbean Stone, nothing, this is Caribbean Stone, and, uh, so, basically, you know, so the responsibilities are, you know, grant administration, uh, communications, community engagement, marketing and promotions, and, and other administration, which is basically, uh, backing up or, uh, doing some of the executive assistance. Duties when required in her absence, and, and, uh, other administrative. Yeah, that's, that's the only one I read it over, it's, it's well done, that's, the one concern I have is, is as long as that position doesn't get, uh, or that person doesn't get distracted from their main responsibility, you know, that they get pulled into working downstairs in the office as tax clerk or, or EA, that their focus is, we want that to be dealt with.
Do we have new community edition strategy now, Tom?
I can really, no, no, no. No, it's always been, well, we better do this, we better do that, yeah. So something, that can be developed too. I mean, ba- basically, so, some of, some of these things, like, it sounds like there's a lot there, right, but, there's a reason that, you know, grant administration is the first thing on the list, because that's, that's gonna be your, that person's key core duty, right? And then, some of the other, other things that, uh, has been on the desks of other employees in communications, we, you know, Leslie does what she can do, uh, in, in communications and keeping the website updated and things, things like that, but having a, another person that can have that as a, as a thing, because, you know, I don't think grant administration, even though it's gonna be a very important role, is not gonna take up a hundred percent of that person's time, right? It depends on the time of year too. Well, yeah, although I sit on another group, they were hiring somebody, they, they were doing all their own grant work, and they were wanting to hire somebody, because they just couldn't get enough grant applications in. It, cause they were not what, they, it's like an athlete's got money from a foundation, not from municipal, and there's thousands of organizations that provide grants, and they just couldn't keep up with it, you know, so, it, it may not be, but there's a lot more, the thing, the thing is, the thing is, no job description, anybody's job description is a Caribbean Stone, right? I mean, if we find that, you know, it takes a hundred percent of that person's time to do grant administration, then, and it's paying off, then so be it.
Job descriptions, they're, oh, that's funny, the candidate.
Yeah, exactly, you gotta find the right person, it's gotta be a very organized individual, that's gonna be able to, to do, do this job, right? What's everybody thoughts on it? Pretty bad time to review, it's, this is very early, early, we do, in the process.
You gotta have, you gotta have an education component there in communications and media. It's a lot of it.
It is, yeah, I, I was gonna say, how to use the media, but.
No, that's the.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I do have a question, that's related to what you said, which, uh, i- if we don't get the right candidate applied, uh, do we have a strategy for how we're gonna find them, as opposed to then finding us? It's really.
Well, that's a part of the education, which you, yeah.
Cause, yeah, we, we want the right person, but how do we locate them if they don't, if they don't find us?
Well, yeah, you can't, well, you could, you could hire something like, uh, what's his name, that company.
Ted Hunter, Elwin.
Yeah, I can't think of the name now, and I will say the name, I think, but they, that's, they, they do a lot of work in municipal recruitment and personnel and stuff.
You know, some, you look at someone like Jackie Foster, who went out of the news media and then went for, into the office. That's the kind of person that could look.
Yeah, I, I had some meetings with Jackie, but she was in the fingers office. Now she's gone, doing something else.
She was screwing around the old estimate.
Yeah, yeah, very tough person, but, uh, so Tom, are you looking for an approval on the job description now?
I don't know. Just to read, read for you, I'm, so, you know, I, I want feedback, I guess, and, you know, and, I know what, what needs that we, that I need in the office down there, if I know, I know what, what we, what we need, what we're shorthanded in, you know, and that's why it's such a, a broad, broad thing.
But then you, then you risk of, of casting too wide, yeah.
Well, you see, that, that, that's the thing, if you, but if we concentrate on what we, some core things, and some of the, the o- o- other things, like office administration and stuff, or that, you will come with that person anyway, right? Or should come with that person.
Is this something that we can start with, not as a job per se, but something that we can approach a consultation firm to actually start communications policy and, and all those things, to get that sort of narrowed down before we actually look for a body?
Yeah, well, don't we have a, uh, communications policy, well, didn't you pass it a few years ago?
I, I may be way off base, I'm trying to think, think, I, you maybe have a look at that, yeah. And I can't remember, I, I know that, uh, that there are some policies on who, who speaks for, for, um, down to council, and, yeah, that, those type of things, and, you know. But, right?
Communications policy can be as wide as, I mean, it could be right down to, this is the color and pant tone of the logo is, and this is how it can be applied, and how it's not gonna be applied, and, I mean, we tell you one or a lot, right?
We do actually have that one. Well, it covers, yeah. Yeah, so you, you're looking for some input on this, just feedback to you, and, yeah, yeah, I, I mean, the thing, the thing is,
I did some research on possibility of funding of, of a position, and there is a, there is a program called Nova Scotia Community Works Program, uh, that's done by the province, and we can get up to twenty-five thousand dollars for a position, with certain checks, now. Basically, the information that I found was a year old, and I'm assuming that, uh, the program is gonna be renewed for the next, for this coming year as well, right? So, um, but, but most of that, and some of that is like, um, you know, having redwoods and, and harming redwood, with expertise, and then giving them the experience and stuff like that, and so.
It would be nice to have somebody come in there and run it, run it right off the day one, so.
Us spending a year or two training, and we're getting, you know.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, based on what I, the research I did on funding, it's mostly around giving the experience and, and to workers and, and things like that, so, I mean, basically, if we're gonna want to put, hire a person, uh, that's gonna be, uh, up and run, running, speaking in the first week that we're here, or for a day or two that we're here, then we probably don't have to, basically, decide that we're gonna have to fund this ourselves, because I don't think we're gonna be able to fit that into a program unless there's something like there, but, uh, yeah.
Okay, well, feed Tom, you're thinking, look at it, read it over thoroughly, your thoughts and stuff, and feed him to do, for you, on, on the job description. And other suggestions to make him up. Cause we, at the same time, we don't wanna drag this out for another year, if we're gonna do it, we don't wanna wait another year. We're coming up to our budget time, so it's, it's a good time to look at it, see if it fits in our budget, Matthew just told you, Rich.
Yeah.
Yeah. For, for today.
We have, yes, we have cash, we don't have a great big, uh, huge stream of the future, unfortunately. We can spend it once, and it's gone.
Yeah, so get it, get, do that, yeah, so we can, if we're gonna do it, we can prove it all, and, I guess, basically, what it comes down to is the old thing, you know, the old question, can we afford it? And the other side of the question is, can we afford not to, right? And what's the cost, what's the cost of a position, and what's the cost not to fund that position, how much are we losing, right? Well, we know we're missing on the grants.
Well, that's it.
Time they have.
We, uh, if we ended up with some, some grants that we didn't know about, and that we can utilize, I mean, it saves us a lot of money.
Unfortunately, a lot of these positions, part of the time is finding grants to fund their position. I see that so often, they spend a lot of time funding it.
Yeah, I didn't exactly say that that's what they get to do.
No.
But, you know, the, the, the thing is, is, you know, if they find, especially if it's for capital items, uh, infrastructure projects and, and things like that, or other programming, right? And, you know, the money that they, they save through that grant can help offset the cost of that person's salary, right?
You guys, this, this almost, when you think about, you're, you're gonna spend money to hire a person that you're not sure is going to do the job you want them to do, I'm almost thinking to myself, maybe the money, but they better spend hiring a firm to say, find us money for X, Y, and Z.
Sure, there are firms that will do your grant searching for it.
Yeah, there are.
And they take, and basically, yes, they take zero dollars unless they find the money, then it's a percentage of contingency.
So is there something that your next senior staff meeting, that, you know, maybe they can come up with some things that, like you said, what, what can be taken off their plate and given to this other plate, maybe? I mean, I don't know, we've got, like, Ed does grants now, Alexi does, uh, community work, communication, um, is it a grant person we need, or is it more administration people we need to, to cover this grant?
I think it's, well, the job description addresses that, yeah.
Is that?
I mean, technically, you, you, if you want to, you can split that and have two positions, uh, and, and four, two positions, you know, right? Sketch here. You know, and that, that, that's the thing, that's why I'm trying to, to at least try to get enough in, in there, uh, not to be able to get some, some things done, and we're, we're not, uh, council's not scratching their head, it's the same old one, why? And, you know, picking up the newspaper, or looking online and saying, oh, look at that, Yarmouth, the town of Yarmouth, just got another hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for some project that needs, but, but, how, no, we can't give it, right? They got two hundred. Well, they got, they've got a person in place that, that's all that they do, right?
They got two hundred odd thousand dollars for the street skate park.
Yeah.
Right?
That's all that person does, they got a dedicated person that do, does that, right? And that, that's the thing, so that person is paying for the salary by getting these grants.
And I think that's the intention when we got together was, was that, right?
Yeah. And the other, other thing is, is because grants is only one, one, one thing that everybody i- i- is doing down there, down there is, you know, the thing is, you know, we're not overstaffed by any means.
No.
Right? I can use another body and for a portion of, of this thing, right?
Get your idea, yeah, yeah, and I think we all agree, while you had your, your, so I think, put your thoughts in, in email, send them to Tom, so we can discuss this January second, or, and get a job description, get a job script, description approved, we heard that we can hire a grant or, uh, organization for grants, that doesn't address some of the other stuff downstairs either, so, uh, so it's all that that we need to pull together and say, okay, are we rolling in with this?
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that we can hire on the outside, if that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
I mean, hire C A O outside, I don't know the fuck, I don't.
Oh, you're not going to?
No, I'm totally going. Okay, let's move on to, you are a municipal boundary review, you did this, has it been eight years? Did that we did this?
Yeah.
I don't know, I guess, no. So we had to do this eight years ago, that's why there's five of us sitting here instead of seven of us. Well, four councils of the mayor, it was six councils of the mayor. So what kind of process do we want to go through this time? I guess we should review maybe what we did the last time.
Instead of rock, paper, scissors, turn it up, loser's heavy.
Well, there is a process, some of it is just, I see some, you know, some of you, it's, they get to the point where they just run ahead, that we, like, this is a.
I don't think that we, I don't think that we're gonna have to, it goes with the process that we give, I mean, because, I mean, for the, basically, for, for us, uh, we're at large, or council's elected at large, so it's just a matter of, uh, so the boundaries are, are the boundaries, we can't expand the boundaries. Not that we would want to expand the boundaries at the time, it'd be nice if they would allow us to do that under this process.
Right?
They won't let us go, I don't think, the last, the conversation where we reduced council size, I don't know, actually, I don't think they'll allow us to reduce any, if we wanted to. I don't think they'll allow us to do that now, because we're down to.
We're, we're, we're down, as far as town councils are concerned, we're, we're, I mean, still, it's got the full seven members, uh, that we're, that is regulated under the old towns act, right? But, uh, we're at five, and that's, for the most part, that's what everybody, most of the towns are, are getting, getting to, except for the larger towns, it's because some of the towns actually have awards as well, and anybody that's, uh, at large, so I, I think that basically, you have to, I mean, it's council decision on what they want to do, whether they wanna hold, hold the, the council number at what it is, or if they wanna try to build a case for, for the reduction, or do they wanna build a case for even more council members?
Right. I think it's very difficult to build a case to increase.
I think it's difficult to build a case to decrease.
Yeah.
Cause you can't, you can't go down, you can't drop one, you'd have to drop two, you'd have to drop two. Cause it used to be the mayor didn't have a vote, the mayor has a vote, so if you dropped, you dropped one.
You dropped four.
It's been very hard to, yeah.
A lot of your decisions will be tied and.
Well, yeah, you definitely try to reach a by consensus in any of your, but if you drop, yeah, so, I don't think you want that, so. So basically, this was just sort of, uh, more of a.
Yeah.
Yeah, more for information as to what's coming up in, in the next few months.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be ready for that little conversation again. Fire hall.
I put the fire hall on the agenda, but this one we had a discussion, we had in our strategic planning on our next phase, infrastructure replacement. We have a, this, this council, as it's going to be right now, has never really had a discussion about our aging fire hall, and what timeline, what costs, what needs to be done to replace, or rebuild, or relocate, or whatever, that building.
We need the four, we need, the joint committee, we, we've had those, we've had the fire department.
Yes.
Four, three billion dollars.
Or preliminary numbers.
Yeah, but we need to do, we need to activate that, uh, committee, just to get it going, they had, you know, fire hall, I was, Peters in the fire department, I was Mike's in the fire department, we, we all like, make shiny, make us in the best, but.
This is supposed to say it doesn't happen overnight, and it's good.
Could be football, and they know that, too. But it really, uh, should reach out to them and say, let's, let's reactivate this, done a lot of work to the fire hall. Can it be relented? Can it be moved? We looked at moving it, it's a real struggle to find a place to put a fire department, unless you, you know, you give up something, that kind of stuff, so, yeah. And it needs to be struck, coupled, two or three from the fire department, a couple from there.
And just to add into there, when we start down our capital asset management process in, in, hopefully in January, these are the kind of questions that are gonna come up, and, and where council priorities are gonna start putting things in place, or, you know, when do we wanna do these? How, how big a priority are they?
I just, I thought it's a discussion we should have, it's just due diligence.
Yeah, it's going on, it, it's kind of died a little bit here in the last year, cause we ended up doing a lot of work at that fire department. A lot of work, actually, it's, it looks pretty good now inside.
And we thought we had a piece of land that was, would have been made suitable, but it turned out that it wasn't.
Well, it actually got sold, and it's gonna end up being a development, it was fast the other day, so, so there was, that land's been sold, so, uh, and do we need a fire hall?
Right.
So that, you know, that's, yeah, so, okay, uh, you know, uh, you see, and that, that's the, yeah, other thing that brings back to the position that we just talked about,
and, you know, the thing is, is if that's on the radar, I mean, you know, the, the Berwicks and, uh, they, they, and that, it's got these new fire halls and, and, and that, they, they got them by acquiring grant money, right, so, you know, federal funding or provincial funding.
Absolutely.
A combination of both, and I mean, the thing is, is that, you know, that's another thing that this, is position would be in charge of, looking to see what's out there, and seeing whether you can lever, leverage some, some of the funding that, that is out there for, for those.
I had a co- a conversation with a member of parliament before the last election, they love funding by purpose, they love funding, cause fire department is, is the core of every committee, and they, I had that conversation with you, you let me know when things are rolling, because they'll find money, so. And the Berwicks, that's, they got big money, lots of money, but there also needs to be some fundraising locally, for it, too.
COVID's definitely hurt that.
Huh?
COVID's definitely hurt that.
Oh, yeah, that's, it's really changed it the last couple of years.
Any fundraising whatsoever.
So, you know, in, in the form of committee, obviously, there's gonna be a couple from the fire halls, and staff here, and maybe some council members, but, uh, you got Mike, that's a current member of the fire department, so I don't know where that puts you on past.
Positive interest.
Yeah, exactly, and I'm.
But that's why I brought it up, because I don't have an affiliation.
Yeah, and I, and I was there for thirty years, Peter was there for thirty odd years, too, so, I, I kind of know, from the fire department member's side, I know what I'd like to see if I was still there.
Well, wants and needs, right?
Yeah, exactly, and, and, and they have, then there's the plans drawn up by, uh, the architect, beautiful plans, and I think it would raise around four million dollars, so, four million dollar investment in the fire department in this little town, to be invested.
That was, that was everything.
Yeah, that was the best.
When we did it, he said to put everything in, that's your, that's like the whole thing done.
Yeah.
And then looking forward, too, it might be, I mean, it's a little early to tell right now, too, but it may be. now too, but it may be an economic stimulus, stimulus that the town could really use, right? We don't know what's going to happen in the next year or so.
To build a fire department, yeah. Hopefully, that's what the fines do. I, I, I was having a conversation with Tom earlier about a property, and he's a player, not in town, on Liverpool, and I was going to call the fire chief, but they'll say the fire chief, I'll, I'll mention to him, I was going to call him.
So should we?
And we look at it when he.
Oh, should we?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have a committee, we're just complaining to somebody, some people in the committee, a couple from here, there obviously are going to be staff involved, that's probably Tom and Ed.
Send a letter to, to Ralph.
Yeah, he's still the president.
He's still the president, to see if there's a couple members that went on the executive that would do it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get a letter, I'm sure a little couple, I'm sure, yeah. Because we had thought we're building just a building next to it for stores, you know, we have all that land there and stuff like that, so.
That's more practical to build on this, this.
Well, the whole purpose of buying the land next door was to do this, to do this way, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, basically, you know, you can, of course, they said, well, we've got no parking, well, the thing is, is.
Dig a lot across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, you go, find a parking, cross road.
Like Tom mentioned too, I mean, there's no, besides this high school, there's no real big community center for a town to be?
No, but that was a discussion we've had too. The Pines is looking, Dicky Hall built, eight, nine months in the year, and then with the new Conway Community Center being built, I guess you try to balance with how many big community centers do you need?
Are they going ahead with that or is it starting to get?
Yeah, yeah, they're in the fundraising process now, yeah. So that was a conversation, how much do you need too?
I guess when it comes to storms and parrotages, it's always a fire department you tend to go to or.
Well, you tend to.
Yeah, tend to, but that's where you reach to.
Yeah, they national.
The thing is, the site that's there, including everything that's owned, you couldn't, I think it was, they didn't like the logistics of having to work out an old fire hall and all that, or, that type of thing, right? And, but you could.
You'd build.
Build the apparatus, you know, section over here, brand new.
Apparatus section.
And then, you know, connect to the other one and make that the recreation or the community down on the ground floor, right? All your accessibility things accomplished and everything, right?
Well, that's the big challenge, accessibility. Trying to get upstairs and have old fire hall upstairs is, yeah, so it has to be ground, everything has to be ground level today.
So your community section would be built probably over this side, and then.
Apparatus.
Apparatus.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll get a letter, say we'd need, we'll get a committee structure.
They say they're not giving out until January, so.
Yeah, so we'll get a committee structure.
Yeah, and with the loss of the, you think of burning up here, with the loss of the, with the United Church Hall, that may be land going that way that would maybe available.
They have development. Yeah, they got some plans from that land. Yeah, no, no, they, right now, it's going to be green space, they're going to clean it up, and then they do have some ideas for it. I'm going to be sitting on that, or.
We can sell that piece to them, because we're, we're blocked there anyway with the driveway, so.
Yeah.
Still got that piece of land, there's no good to us or anything. To the town?
Yeah.
To the town.
Well, there was interest, there was a letter asking to buy that one, so. Okay, yeah, so we'll get that rolling. They came last year, not much has happened since then. We need a motion to win camera, so.
Second.
Second. You're all favor going in camera?
I do that.
Tom? Do we all want to do our, is that a second to that?
Sure.